Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. It's a Tuesday, February 7, 2017. It is 6:30 PM. We are at City of Palm Coast City Council Meeting. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Lights out.
Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clovis.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. Agenda item number one are the minutes of the city council, January 17, January 14, and January 30, 2017. Council members, have you reviewed the minutes? And I will entertain a motion to approve.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to our proclamations and presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is a presentation Tobacco 21 by the Flagler Palm Coast High School International Tobacco Oriet Program. Please come forward and state your name, who's ever going to present.
All three of us were from Flagler Palm Coast High School, part of the IB program, here to present on Tobacco 21. I'm Daniel Thomas.
I'm Annabella Juliana.
I'm Cameron Bun.
Go Bulldogs.
Before we begin our presentation, I would like to ask if we are able to pass out these folders about our main mission.
Absolutely. Please do.
Thank you. You might want to grab that one back from Virginia.
Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to first say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our Tobacco 21 project for you all tonight.
So just to reiterate, my name is Daniel Thomas. I'm part of the IB program. I've been involved in students working against tobacco, which is a club that really promotes and to raise awareness about the dangers of tobacco for about three years now. So presenting here tonight about Tobacco 21 is definitely an honor and something that I really enjoy and hope to move on with.
I'm Cameron Bun. I am also a senior in IB at FPC, and I've been involved in SWAT for three years.
And I'm Annabella Juliana, an IB senior at FPC, and I'm taking after my sister in what she did in high school.
So to begin with, we do have our mission statement, which is to save Flagler County's future generations by raising the tobacco sales age to 21. Throughout our presentation, we'll come up with different facts that we'll present about why we actually think that this will be effective in our community.
Okay, so we've identified the problem as being the fact that lifetime tobacco use amongst Flagler County students in 2016 was higher than other forms of drugs, and the tobacco category includes e-cigarettes, vaporizers, and regular cigarettes on the graph. The average age of tobacco addiction is 12 years old, and 90% of tobacco users are addicted by the age of 18, despite the fact that tobacco products are supposed to be used by people 18 and over. Youth tobacco use remains a serious problem in Flagler County. Findings from the 2016 Florida Youth Tobacco Survey suggest that 1 in 3 youth aged 11 to 17 in our county report ever trying a tobacco product, and e-cigarettes are now the most popular form of tobacco product.
So as we came across this problem, we found a solution: to raise the tobacco sales age to 21. Data has shown that raising the sales age to 21 would dramatically reduce the presence of tobacco-related drugs in our schools, and this is because high school students don't typically know people over the age of 21 who would be willing to buy and then give them tobacco-related products. This solution would result in an overall healthier youth and community.
So next are our milestones, some of the things that we have accomplished and hope to accomplish throughout this year. So first off, we met with our school advisor, her name is Mrs. Tomko, to talk about our project and get our feet wet into the process of how we should go about solving the problem that we identified. Next, we met with Ms. Heather and Mrs. Terry, who are here in the room with us today, about what we actually need to do, who we need to meet with in order to make this effective. In January, we presented to the Tobacco Partnership Meeting at the Government Services Building. We were able to show some of the things that we had in mind and really garner their support in our goals. In February, today, we're meeting here in Palm Coast, City of Palm Coast, and then we also have the City of Benel meetings as well. In March, we meet with the City of Flagler Beach, and hoping that they will sponsor us as well, and also the county commissioners too. And hopefully in April of this year, we can have a county-wide ordinance pass.
So you can't start talking about smoking without unfortunately talking about death. Looking at the graph, smoking and secondhand smoke account for over half a million deaths a year in the United States. That is equivalent of three fully-loaded 747s crashing and burning every day at the Orlando Airport. If one plane crashed, it would be in the news for months, but tobacco-related issues are not related or reported in that type of fashion.
This slide shows some effects that tobacco has on the user themselves. Such effects include different kinds of cancer, birth complications, and Alzheimer's. And then this slide shows effects that tobacco has on the user and their loved ones, such as sadness, health bills, and things like that.
So first off, we do have a research study done by the Institute of Medicine. As a result of big tobacco, raising the minimum sales age from 18 to 21 can't be done nationally just because big tobacco has been effective in really lobbying our government and making sure they were able to get what they wanted. Tobacco companies do rely on creating new smokers out of youth. They do realize that many of their own base of smokers are starting to suffer from a lot of tobacco-related illnesses and starting to die. And raising the age means less new smokers. Research has shown that in their 20s, people are less willing to try smoking if they were to, like, smoke when they were younger. So definitely raising the sales age from 18 to 21 will really help to decrease the amount of smokers that we currently have.
So if our proposal is passed, this research shows what we would see and how much we would see. There's also reason to believe that the drop in youth initiation would be closer to 50% with the tobacco sales age being changed.
And as you can see, there's also a 12% drop in the overall smoking, a drop in prematurity, and also a drop in SIDS as well.
The momentum behind this is huge. An average of one city a week passes a Tobacco 21 ordinance. Hawaii became the first state to raise their tobacco sales age to 21, which they began enforcing January 1 of 2016. California has also passed this as well.
Research shows that exposure to nicotine can have damaging effects on the prefrontal cortex of the brain, which can alter a person's adulthood. The prefrontal cortex is involved with aspects of decision-making, cognition, and memory. Studies have shown that the brain isn't fully developed until the age of 25, and tobacco products have been linked to cancer and early death, and as of right now, tobacco is still the leading preventable cause of death in the United States. Tobacco use not only causes problems for the user, but it can also affect the premature babies. Tobacco use can cause infertility, miscarriages, and stillbirths, among many other things. 45% of infant deaths in northeast Florida had smoking as one of the many factors. Our infant mortality rate is 5.8 infant deaths per 1,000 deaths. The mortality for black and Hispanic babies is significantly higher, and Flagler County women ages 18 to 21 smoke at twice the rate of their older counterparts.
So to continue on, the fight against big tobacco has been pretty effective in its job. For the most part, we have been able to decrease the amount of students that are addicted to nicotine and also cigarettes. However, with the introduction of e-cigarettes, we saw a great increase in the amount of youth who are actually smoking cigarettes now. And through that, this is one of the main reasons why we're here tonight, just because e-cigarettes, they're encouraging youth to actually, like, smoke for the most part, just because youth tend to think that they're, "It's a new product. It's being advertised as it's pretty safe," but we do know from previous research that it is actually harmful and could have many harmful effects on the health of youth as well. This is graphs dealing with alcohol sales age over history. We did analyze this to help back us up on our Tobacco 21 initiative. So if you look at the graphs, we go back to 1977, and if you know the history about why they raised the sales age of tobacco, or it goes to the history of voting age first, the 26th Amendment, if you're old enough to fight, then you're old enough to vote. And the alcohol industry thought, "Well, if you're old enough to fight, you're old enough to vote, then you're obviously old enough to be able to purchase and consume alcohol." However, while they made their point and people bought into their point, there was a deep or sharp decline or a sharp increase in the amount of crashes and injuries on highways, especially due to drunk driving. And it wasn't until the 1980s, when President Reagan and the Congress at that time saw that as an issue, and they were very hands-on in actually raising the alcohol sales age to 21. Also during this time too, there was also a deep cultural shift in our society as well. If you think back 60, 70 years ago, a 12-year-old drinking alcohol one might have seen in the norms, but when you look at today, it's totally condemned. So this is something of relating it to raising the sales age of tobacco that it's something that can be very effective in our community and elsewhere.
Needham, Massachusetts is our exemplar for the success of the Tobacco 21 resolution. In 2004, the Tobacco 21 initiative started gaining ground. It was thought that the change in age for tobacco product sales wouldn't have a great effect on the area due to the fact that Needham is rural and it was surrounded by urban areas. Many believed that if the want for tobacco products was high enough, people would just exit Needham and purchase them elsewhere. But this wasn't the case. Smoking rates went down in Needham, and that's why we believe that it would also work here, because we have a similar demographic.
And this is just a graph of what Cameron just said. As you can see, in high school smoking, Needham had a much sharper decrease in the amount of users that used tobacco within the last 30 days as compared to Metro West. They had over the three times decline. And also amongst people who frequently use tobacco, Needham also had a sharp decline as well.
The majority of people who supply tobacco products to those under the age of 18 are under the age of 21 themselves. As previously stated, high school students don't know many people over the age of 21 who would be willing to supply them with tobacco products. Big tobacco companies do not want the Tobacco 21 initiative to become successful because they believe that it will significantly decrease their sales. However, this isn't true because 18- to 20-year-olds only purchase 2% or around 2% of cigarettes sold, which means that tobacco sales would hardly be affected. It is also important to note that 18- to 20-year-olds may account for as much as 90% of adults who purchase tobacco for younger kids. If we were able to raise the sales age to 21, this percentage would significantly decline.
So the question is, why now? We've realized that there's a problem in our community with the amount of tobacco usage, and now we're asking our elected officials to help us protect our youth.
And this goes with our ask at the beginning as well, where we're asking for your letter of support in helping us along with our project, whether you may disagree or agree with what we have presented. It is important to note that we, as youth here in Flagler County, we definitely do see a problem that not every adult may see. We are in the public school system. We have been in instances where students brought tobacco on campus. So us being youth and actually experiencing these things, we definitely do think it's important, and we do hope that you do give us your letter of support to go on and move forward with our project. And are there any questions at this time?
I do have one. I think it's great with what you're doing and that you're saving lives is what you're doing. I mean, you might not see the effects of it right now, but you're saving lives. The vape cigarettes or the vape machines, whatever you call them, do you see that the kids that aren't using the cigarettes anymore are using those?
Yeah, it is a popular trend now, just because, as I said, they've done a pretty good job of marketing e-cigarettes as something that's safe and something that youth would enjoy using, but it does have a lot of harmful effects to it as well from previous research conducted. So it is something that does need to be dealt with.
Questions?
I just really wanted to say thank you, because it's extraordinary when we have our youth in our community taking on such an important topic, and I, for one, will 100% support this initiative, and anything I can do to support it out in the community, we will do equally. It is something that's still shocking to me today that people take on smoking as a habit with all the information that's available to us today. It's sort of changed the dynamic, and you're furthering that information and getting that out. So I think you're looking for a letter of support today?
Yes.
Counsel, are we in agreement to write the letter of support? Any objections?
Just who are we writing to?
Get us the details of, you're looking for a letter of support for your project?
Yes.
Now, for an ordinance, we're looking at the county?
Yes, the county.
Okay, so we would write, you want us to support your project to the county?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Well, if I may interject, I think that the best, where they need to focus is the state, the state of Florida, because there is a state statute in Chapter 386 that says that regulation of smoking, e-cigarettes are not really defined as smoking under the statute. The regular smoking has preempted the state of Florida. So you were talking about earlier in your presentation the power of big tobacco, and in reality, the big tobacco is not only exercised, if you will, its power in Washington, but also in Tallahassee. And you might want to take a look at Section 386.209 of the Florida statutes, which specifically has preemption to the state of Florida. So if that could be changed, if we could get rid of that, I don't think, I can tell you that some of the other local governments that I've worked with, they have specifically asked, "To what extent can they get involved and protect their own citizens?" And they're not allowed to because of what has happened up in Tallahassee, to another example of the loss of home rule and the scope of preemption. So I would respectfully suggest you probably want to focus on Tallahassee.
All right, thank you.
Did you have something, I think this is Mom over here, did you want to say something about what he was just saying?
Yeah, actually, let me stop that for a second.
You just have to go over and, sorry.
I'm representative from Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation, and Tobacco 21 nationally, and Heather Scartelli is the area director here. I think that she'd like to make a point to preemption.
Yes, the city attorney had a really great point about Florida statute, Chapter 386, that regulates the act of smoking where it's preempted to the state of Florida. As you have in your packet, there is a one-pager on the legal grounds that is actually solid for local municipalities and counties to address youth access issues to tobacco products, which are not preempted to the state. It is a little tricky when you start looking at our e-cigarette statute as well. There's some definitions there, but I think our students' ask here is, what's really important, is that if, as the counsel, you feel it's something worthy for us to address at the county level, that's what they're really looking for, is their support. But we're definitely, there's a sample ordinance in there that's been vetted by the Tobacco Control Legal Consortium, and we definitely would love to take any direction or suggestions that our local municipal attorneys would have for us as well. We're definitely looking at this as a collaborative project. Thanks.
Well, I'd like to see something, if we can draft, that would be a general statement of our support for this activity, in whatever way, whether it's at the county level or if it has to go to the state level, you know, whatever. So we just want to say as a unit, I don't want to speak for everybody, but say as a unit that, yeah, we like this idea and we would like to see it advanced.
If city council is in agreement, it sounds like you are, we'll be happy to draft that letter for the mayor's signature.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We'll now move to our second presentation for the evening, presentation of the Second Annual Health and Safety Employee Calendar.
Mayor, city council, this is our safety team in conjunction with our wellness team, and it's led by Carol Minion. I think she's going to do the honors.
Yes, I'm looking for my partner in crime. Oh, there he is. Pete, Pete Russell, he is the head of the safety team, and Pete and I, it's a collaborative effort between both our teams, so we're real excited about this second annual calendar. Staff was asked to ask their children, their grandchildren, nieces, nephews to please enter, participate in this calendar, and come up with ideas about health that affect you or your family, and also safety, and also workplace safety. And our age groups are 3 to 6, 7 to 10, 11 to 14, and 15 to 18. And we do the judging, and we pick a panel of employees that have no entries, no family or anything as our judging panel, and they do 40% originality and creativity, 10% on the aesthetic quality, 30% on the clarity of the message, and then 20% on adhering to the contest rules. So that's our judging criteria. This was last year's winners. So as you guys accept your gifts, please don't run off, because we would like to get a photo of all of you with the mayor and council, so please don't take off on me. And last year was Domingo Gonzalez. He won with his "Don't text and drive" theme. So we're going to start out with our honorable mention, and first person up is Zoe Umberg. She is April. Come on up, Zoe. She... Zoe is the daughter of Kathy Umberg, and Kathy works in our GIS department. And Zoe, if you can tell, she loves cats and tomatoes. She also loves to do rock climbing, right? Excellent. Congratulations, Zoe. You're going to go ahead and accept your gift from yourself. So what you, we'll see that the kids are receiving, they're getting a goodie bag with a lot of Palm Coast tchotchkes or swag. Also, they're getting a copy of their own calendar, because you know they have to have that in their bedroom, and they're getting a book about wildlife and birds and just a lot of great, great things. And then they're also getting an art supply gift, which we purchased at Michael's. So we're trying to support our local business as well. Next person up is Joaquin Papa. So he is eight, thank you, he is eight years old, and you can see what was his topic was "Don't hide under a bed during a fire." That is an awesome tip. And he loves to play soccer, and you like spicy chicken wings, I'm told.
Yes.
All right. Next time, we'll have to order some spicy chicken wings. So you're going to go ahead and walk over, Mr. Russell will give you your gift. All right, Joaquin. Our next honorable mention is Sienna Van Bellen. She is October, and she is eight years old. Hello. And she is the daughter of Kristen Van Bellen, and Kristen works in our IT department, and she helps saves us every day from all different IT, you know, issues. And Sienna, from what I'm told, you like chocolate chip pancakes. Excellent, I'm going to have to come over when you make some. And that you love spending time with your pets. Excellent. All right. We've got to hop over, Mr. Russell will give you your gift. And I'd like to just back up one second to Joaquin. His father is Jose Papa. I'm sorry, I left out Jose. There he is. Yeah. And Jose works in our planning department. He's one of our awesome planners. Next up on our honorable mention is Philip Canjolosi, and he is August. Yay, come on up. Oh, yes, I am. Yes, so he is age 10, and take a look at what Philip did. He's talking here too about texting, right?
Yeah, texting and driving.
Yeah, bad idea, right?
Yes.
Absolutely. So let's see, and Philip, what are some of the things that you like? Oh, you are a cello player. For three years, he's been playing, and he is the youngest in his group. Excellent. All right, and yes, he's a cousin of myself and Charlie Minnie. Go ahead, Mr. Russell will give you your gift. Thank you, Philip. Next up, we have Ethan Van Bellen. Come on up, Ethan. And he is the one who is on our back cover, and he is talking about vegetables and eating fruit. He likes pirates. All right, so you are 10 years old, and you are the son of Kristen Van Bellen, so your sister was just up here. So you guys were having a competition, right, on who was gonna, who was gonna win? Yep, all right, well, you are all set. You're going to go over and give him a gift.
I bet he likes chocolate pancakes.
I think we're all going over.
Next up is Diana Canjolosi. We have another brother and sister team here. Hello. She is age 11. And you were talking too, what were you talking about?
I was talking about legal drinking and driving.
Right.
Like alcohol.
And I see you have a dog in your drawing too. That's excellent.
It's supposed to be like an example?
An example?
A funny example.
All right. She is 11, and she is also the cousin of myself and Charlie Minnie, and she plays the violin. And she's been playing the violin for four years now, and she is excellent, right? All right. All right. She is 11, and she is also the cousin of myself and Charlie Minnie, and she plays the violin. And she's been playing the violin for four years now, and she is excellent, right? So those are our honorable mention. Now we're going to move to our age categories and our first, second, and third place. We are going to start out with the age group three through six, and this is our first-place winner is Gunner Martin for February. Hi, Gunner.
Hi.
I think you were up here last year, weren't you?
Yes.
I know, and you are the son of Robert Martin. Where's Robert? Robert works in our building. He's one of our wonderful building inspectors. And Gunner loves to play baseball, but he would rather be watching Goosebump movies than playing baseball, right? That's what your dad told me. And he is six years old, so congratulations, you are the first-place winner. That actually concludes our three-through-six-year-olds. We only had one submission, and, and he won, and you could take a look, he's talking about wearing seat belts. So that's very important. Thank you, Gunner. Now we have our age group seven through 10, and we have Lantry Martin. There's a theme you're going to see going on here with the, with the Martin brothers. How are you, Lantry?
Good.
Good, all right, and you are eight years old, and your month is September, and you are also the son of Robert Martin, and you love football, and your favorite team is who?
Seahawks.
The Seattle Seahawks. Hey, see, you got, you got some support back there. Excellent, so you're going to go ahead and get your gift with Mr. Pete, and he's talking about safety during hunting season and wearing bright orange. All right. Thank you. Next up is Chloe Williams. She's second place in our age group of seven to 10, and she is January. You tricked me. You tricked me. Oh, you okay? I know, I've, I've been getting that too. Let's see. So you are in January, you're nine years old, and you are the daughter of Lena Williams. And Lena works, where's Lena? There she is. And she's up in our finance administration office. She helps us keep all of our budget things straight. So Chloe, from what your mom tells me, that you want to be an American Ninja Warrior someday. How exciting! You'll have to let me know because I would love to come and watch you, and that would be, that would be awesome. Excellent, so Chloe was talking about saving money by packing your lunch and bringing your lunch to work and also eating healthier food than going out, right, and getting Burger King and stuff like that. Yeah. Excellent, well, congratulations. Thank you so much. You get your prize. Next up, we have our third-place winner, same category, seven-to-10-year-old, we have Olivia Papa and her dad, Jose. Hi, Olivia. How are you?
Good.
Congratulations. So you are nine years old, and from what I hear, you love pandas, and you love to bake chocolate chip cookies. That's awesome.
I'm seeing a real theme here.
You'll have to have your dad bring us some, I'd love to try some of your cookies. And what you're, you were talking about putting on sunscreen and making sure you protect your skin so you don't get skin cancer, because when you go to the beach, especially in Florida, there's a lot of sun. It's always shining here, right? So you want to protect your skin. All right, well, thank you so much. Hopefully you'll try out next year. Now we are moving on to our 11 and 14-year-olds. Once again, Martin, we have Logan Martin, first place, and he is July. All right. And he is the son of Robert Martin. Let's see. You're 11 years old, and you love to ride your scooter around the park, from what I, from what I hear. And actually, I really love your, your drawing because of the fireworks and, you know, use your head and not your hand, so don't blow up your, your hand, right, when you go to do fireworks. By any chance, I had somebody ask me, was that a football player that you drew up there that did that maybe a year or so ago?
Oh.
See? Ah-ha. Excellent, excellent. All right, Logan, well, thank you so much, congratulations. You can accept your prize. I always love how creative they are and how they, they think of these things. Our second-place winner is Haley Tucker, and she is the granddaughter of Bill Butler. Hello, Haley. Boy, you're getting tall. I have to start wearing heels. And your month is May, and the reason why I picked you for May is because of the Arbor Day Run, and I hear that she has started running 5Ks, and she can do it under 30 minutes. She'll blow me out the door any day, right? Now, how old are you again? Oh, you're, you're, oh, you're 12.
Yes.
Okay. You were 11 when you entered the contest, but then you had a birthday, so now you're 12. That's awesome, and we are so proud of you, and thank you so much, and keep running. And then our third-place winner, he is not here this evening, but it is Domingo Gonzalez who won last year the cover, and his month is November because he happened to do the, the put out, put it out before it puts you out, and we just had the cigarette, the smoking campaign, so this is great. And he did a wonderful drawing, very, very artistic. We're very proud of Domingo, and so we're sorry that he can't be here. And he is the son of Jackie Gonzalez, and she works in our planning division as well, and from what she tells me, Domingo loves American history and he hopes to be an architect one day. So we're, we're proud of, very proud of him. And now, our first place in the category of the 15-to-18-year-olds is Nicole Nabico, and her month is December. Are you going to sneak up on me? Yep. Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
And that's right, you had a birthday, you're now 16.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Are you driving?
No, not yet. My parents let me get my license.
Just FYI. She'll be on the road soon.
Not yet.
And so what, what your mom tells me is that you love soccer.
Yeah.
And I know, I've seen you play, she's an excellent soccer player. Hopefully she'll get a soccer scholarship. I know that's what your parents are hoping. And I have to say that you are this year's cover winner. So we're very proud, Nicole. So you won first place in your age category, and you also won the cover. So she's talking about staying fit, and look at what she's doing, she's playing soccer. So congratulations, thank you so much. And look at your prize, you get the big, the big art supply. So I just wanted to thank, thank all of you for participating. It really means a lot to the employees. They love to get that calendar, and hopefully all of you will, and we have some extras for those of you that are in the audience, if you'd like, they're sitting there, Mr. Carmen can help you hand them out. So he'll help with that, and just, we hope that you enjoy it and that you keep supporting our health and wellness and safety, and the employees are just thrilled to, to do this, and I am too. Thank you. Have a good evening. Oh, yeah, and we, we need a, we need a group photo, so don't.
Group photo.
Going down?
Squish together. We're going to have to get you guys behind him or squish. Everybody step forward, one step. Okay, and Ms. Chloe, I cannot see your face, thank you, I want to see your beautiful face. Okay, you guys have to smile for a while. Keep smiling. Everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
Parents, are we there?
Oh, yeah, we're good.
Keep smiling. Good? Good? Congratulations, everybody. Those are all superior to what I could draw. Thank you again. I would look to Mr. Reichman to read the ordinance.
Mayor, Council, I wish I could say that this action is our effort to try to deal with the request made by the Foger Palm Coast High School folks regarding smoking, but I'm sure this is not what they meant.
Yes.
So with that introduction, the title of this ordinance is "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida Establishing a Temporary Moratorium Within the Jurisdictional Limits of the City of Palm Coast, Adopting Findings of Fact Prohibiting Any and All Medical Cannabis Activities During the Moratorium Period Including the Growing, Cultivation, Processing, Manufacturing, Dispensing, Distribution, and Sale of Medical Cannabis, Low THC Cannabis, Derivative Products, and Related Activities. This ordinance directs staff to develop proposed Unified Land Development Code provisions and other recommended, recommendations regarding such cannabis-related activities, providing administrative relief procedure, providing for penalties, severability, conflicts, and an effective date."
Someone couldn't hear.
Can you turn the volume up?
Oh, okay.
You're not going to make me read that again, are you?
Yes. Okay, Council members, this is a second reading of an ordinance, or is there any discussion before we open up to the public?
I've got nothing.
Ask, go ahead.
Have there been any developments with what's going on in the legislation process? I know that there were a couple of meetings over the last two weeks, but it doesn't seem like anything's been finalized yet, is that true?
There has not been anything finalized, and there, and you're right, there has been some progress. And from what I have been able to follow and what I've been able to read, it is, it is not, the, the proposals that have been made are not necessarily consistent with, with the language that's contained in, in the amendment itself, that the regulations are to, to a large degree very similar to the regulations that are already in existence for the low THC marijuana that is, is already legal. I know that the mayor has been following this as well, and certainly do not want to steal any of her thunder, so if she has anything to add?
Absolutely. There, there have been several conversations that have taken place in Tallahassee in regards to this issue in particular. It's interesting because just as we anticipated, Tallahassee is certainly throwing their big stick around to ensure that they're inserting what they believe was the intent of the, the language of, on the ballot. So right now, there's discussions on allowing industries that create a whole mode of delivery in regards to growing, dispensing, those types of practices. I know that they're looking at different companies that do that, and they're in discussions with adopting similar ordinances as they did with the pill mill ordinance. So I think you'll see consistent language as far as land use, as where we put it in our communities coming out of Tallahassee, but again, there's a long way to go, and I, I believe the House and the Senate are very divided on this issue. So anything that comes my way, I'll certainly send to this council as a means of, of moving this forward as aggressively as possible.
As of the late last month, and working with your staff, we found, and this is probably not up to date, but at that time, we had found 63 examples of, from local governments, cities and counties, and the, the majority of those have been moratoriums. The regulations that have, that have, are either in the process or, or have been adopted have dealt with land use, and, and the concern, of course, is you get something in place and the productivity of that could be impaired, or just be, just be inconsistent and preempted by what comes out of Tallahassee. And I think what I'm trying to say is consistent with, with the discussion that we've had before. But I do want you to know that consistent with this ordinance, this temporary moratorium, we are continuing to work on a regular basis, and we'll be, we'll be bringing back to you as soon as we have some more certainty, different options and different proposals to allow you to productively enact the regulations that are consistent with Amendment Number Two.
We'll now move to public comment on this agenda item. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin after doing so. Thank you.
Hi, Gary Owens, resident here for just about three years. I moved from the Left Coast, Seattle area, so went through all of this already. I worked closely with some legislative people. Friends of mine were on the right side of the aisle, and when this law was passed, and I worked also with our local city government, and I would tell you, just back off, wait, let the state tell you what to do as far as that goes. You're going to have to follow the state law, the state interpretation anyway. Don't rush it. Don't put something in place and you got to turn around and, and do it again. I think you're just, just best off holding on. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Good evening. My name is Eugene Holland, and I'd like to get into the record a letter that I wrote to each of you on February the first. The headline in the local section of today's issue of the Daytona Beach News Journal stated, "Raise Likely for City Manager."
This is certain, this is not a topic to be speaking, we're speaking about the moratorium on medical marijuana.
I beg you.
That's okay, that's the next agenda item, though. Thank you.
Don't take that off my time, okay?
Oh, no, absolutely. Any other member from the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll take it back to this council. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? None, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a resolution, 2017 City Managers' Annual Base Pay.
Good evening.
Not yet.
Oh, no, not yet, sir.
He's eager. He's got something to say. Read his le, letter. I'm not so sure I'm eager, though. The, you know, this past week, February 1st, was my 10th-year anniversary, which for city managers is quite a milestone. It's been eight years since I've had a pay raise, and our, my contract allows for the pay raise as approved by city council, but for the most part until last year, I did not ask for one. But I am doing so now. As per our discussion at the workshop last week, the resolution in front of you actually does three things. First, it allows for 4% pay raise at my anniversary date, February 1st of this year. It also then allows for a 2% annual pay raise through the next, well, this council, basically for, for the next four years as part of my contract. And then the last thing it does is allows for my evaluation to happen in September and not tied into the pay raise as you requested, and instructed me to do something to make sure that you could have, evaluate me formally at the end of the fiscal year. So I'm ready to answer any questions.
Council, any discussions or questions before we open up to the public?
I do. I want to start with saying I read all the emails, and there is nothing I can say that would say that Jim Landen has not earned a raise after all these years. A 2% raise for the last two years is fine. I think he's earned it, I think he's done a great job. And I know people say if something doesn't get done, you know, it's Jim Landen's fault, and I would love to blame everything on him, but if, if we, if we try to, and we fight for something and it doesn't get done, it's, it's not Jim Landen, it's city council didn't make a strong enough argument, we didn't have three votes. So as much as I like to blame it on him, it's not. But I, as, I would like to give the raise. My only problem is I, the continual raise, I feel as though, just keeping on, giving a raise... I feel as though just keeping on giving a raise without an evaluation or without going through a whole year, I just don't feel comfortable with. And the severance package, I'd like to... I don't want to add this on to a severance package, is what I'm trying to say. So I think if we table this and just maybe open up the contract, give him the raise, don't add it on to a severance package, and don't do a automatic raise every year, just for this two years where we're dealing with right now.
Last year?
Last year and this year. I think that would be better. I just don't want to keep on adding on to a severance package at this point.
Any other counsel comments or questions?
You know, it's interesting, because I took this last week, and I was thinking about something similar like that also. First, I got, you know, the ton of emails, just I'm sure like the rest of the council did, and my only comment with that is this is... We're talking about a $6,000 raise here, and last year, when we had $154 million budget meeting, nobody said a word. And, you know, it just confuses me that we would go to bat and write six- and seven-page letters for a man's raise who's doing a good job, but when it comes to the total package of $154 million, we're silent and we're okay with everything. So, you know, that bothers me, not as a council, it bothers me as a resident of Palm Coast, that we... You know, that we're not that concerned, but we have the focus of a single person on that we're attacking negatively. And I don't think, you know, Jim does his job, and he does his job very well. And, you know, I've gotten the letters and the emails, and everybody mentioned a couple of things, you know, there was like three or four things. They were saying things, you know, Holland Park and something else, and I thought, he's been here 10 years. We're talking about thousands of projects. If you can only pick out three or four, that's a problem. I mean, and the problem is, why are we complaining? You know, and the Holland Park, I mean, if you've listened to us here, you've come here, you know what the problem was. It was we did everything possible. If anybody's at fault, it's this council for approving the contract with this contractor. You know, so... Or you can look at it, and you can blame yourself for wanting the cheapest price. So there's no blame. Nobody's at fault except for the contractor that just didn't do his job, their job. Now, one of the things that I'm very unhappy with, as far as the city manager is concerned, is the previous council's approval of his severance package. I think the severance package is potentially handcuffing to any council and starting this council and councils forward. I always bring it up when they say we want to, you know, change something. Well, let's open the contract, because there's some things I'd like to change in there. We're not going to do that. I'm pretty sure that's not going to happen. Jim's smarter than that. And... But I would like to not add to it as well. I like those words, add to the severance package. But I do like to... I do have... I see no reason whatsoever to not, personally, to not approve this raise, so I just wanted to say those things, I think. I'm done, maybe.
Any other counsel comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
When we met and we were discussing the raise, did you give everyone the same piece of paper with the same set of options on it that you gave me?
Yes.
Understood.
Yes. As hard as on city council, yes. Very confident of that. Why? Now you got my curiosity.
Yeah, I was curious of the set of different options. I wasn't sure if he was positioning me separately or whether there was a fair assessment. Only because we're semi-new to the council, so I totally...
No, 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 no. I... That's a number-one issue with city managers is when you start giving different council members different information.
Yep.
Absolutely not. You all got the same options that I presented to you. Now, those weren't the same options, and that's why I hesitated, is that's not the same options I presented at your meeting, and so I wasn't sure if that's what you're referring to.
Oh, no.
Because after talking to all five of you independently, I made up new options there, which was different than the ones I handed out to you individually.
Fair enough.
But Nick, what you need to know is when, from the time that you get something and we do our workshops, to the time you actually vote on it, things can change.
Sure.
Because we don't want to say, well, I already went this far, so I'm going to go along with it. You know, if we see something that, oh, you know what, maybe that needs to be looked at, then you have to say it, because we're not doing this for ourselves, we're doing it for everybody else.
Oh, and that's why I said it. I'm trying to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Working with the same data.
Yep.
Before I open up to the public, I just... I'm curious, because I don't... What are you... You're suggesting to give him a raise and not add the raise component to his severance pay?
What I actually... I talked to Mr. Reichman, because I wasn't sure if we could go along with the raise and then say, but it doesn't add to the severance package, and...
Add the 2% to the severance package?
Well, because... Okay, so whatever the severance package is now, it's going to add $6,800 on to that additionally, and then... So now the severance package is bigger, you know what I mean? So what I'm saying is, we can't just give a raise, then open the package, and change it. We have to table it. It would mean one more week that we would table it, open it up, change the... We'd have to renegotiate the contract and then add the $6,800.
So we would lock in, because this is what I was thinking, is we're locking in... Because right now, it's based on a percentage of salary. And that's not just salary, that's also the health and...
Car loans.
The retirement plan and all that stuff. It's so... So what I'm thinking is, we lock in at the salary number. We leave it there for severance calculations.
Counsel members, let me make sure you understand what would be the impact of what you're proposing. First of all, your current contract contemplates that and what you're doing this evening, which is revising the salary, which is contemplated to be done on an annual basis, so you're simply doing it for the first time annually. However, if you open up the contract, as has been suggested, then you open up the possibility that a law that was passed in 2011 would kick in, and that's Section 215.425, which provides that any employment agreement that's negotiated or renegotiated after July 2001... 2011, excuse me, July 1, 2011, would require that that renegotiated contract limit severance pay to 20 weeks, which obviously is very different than your current contract.
But we can't do an addendum or... So any...
It would be my opinion that that would risk the change being subject to challenge as if you were to renegotiate or change that to the extent that it would deem to be a renegotiation, such that the Section 215.425, because, see, the difference is that this increase in salary is something that is consistent with the contract. You're not amending the contract.
Correct.
If you are going to change the severance, this is not something that you can just pass a resolution. This is something that you would have to negotiate with the other party to the contract.
So let me... So we're talking a difference of six weeks in severance, right? Because you're at 26 now. I'm going from memory, so you're going to have to help me.
The current... Under Section 10 of the current contract, it provides for a six-month salary.
But 26 weeks, and you're saying that would be locked at 20 if the contract...
If you open up the contract for purposes of renegotiation, it could be interpreted that the statutory requirement would apply and kick in, and I certainly do not... I want to make sure that both parties to the agreement are aware of that potential argument.
I was not, so...
I have one more question. I was just trying to do some research on the data that you gave us over the last workshop, and you had a certain criteria for these raises being allotted for the auto raises, and I think the threshold was $35,000. They get the auto increase each year.
But that was just one year.
Okay, so that was just this last...
Just that one year, is that right? We had the one year, no one got raises.
And then the next...
And then after that, below 30-something thousand.
32,000, I think, something like that.
But now, that's gone.
Gotcha. Okay. I was curious what percentage of our employees are below that threshold?
I'm not real sure, but that was back in the... That was like six, seven years ago, maybe eight years ago. The history is that during the recession, when a lot of people weren't getting pay raises, one year, the city employees, no city employees, got pay raises. Another year, the employees that were under, I think it was about $32,000, got a small pay raise of about 2%. And everybody over that did not. Ever since then, we have followed our pay plan, and the average raise for employees during the past six years, because depending on where they are in their pay range, is about 3.3% to 4%. This past year, because we have attempted to address the pay of our employees to keep them, and that's been one of the, you know, issues we've had, is that your hourly employees' average pay raise has been over 8%, and your salary employees, it was over 6%. That's important to me, because that is... The 4% is obviously substantially under that. The 2% once again would be half, in a range of half of what the average employee would receive in the future, based on what we've been doing the last six years.
And I think if we're going to go ahead and talk about the auto increases each year, that it's really important that we talk about how we evaluate Jim's performance over the last year. Perhaps we put an emphasis more along the lines of aligning our goals to be more accessible on our annual review.
Yes. The other thing is, the way this is written is, obviously, is that city council doesn't have to award that pay raise every year. In other words, you'd have any time in the future, could go up or down from the 2%. And as we discussed last time, the idea was to have an evaluation, and there's different ways of doing that. However, city council would like to do that in the September timeframe, is what you asked for last week. So, you know, I think this accomplishes that.
Are there questions or comments?
I'm going to ask... See, I'm a little thrown off by the information, because I really was going to stand on that, that the raise does not contribute to the severance, but that's taken a big difference. That's... You know, it's not just $6,000 or whatever it is, it's now six weeks of salary plus that, and I'm not ready. I need to think about that.
That's why I said that we could table it.
I didn't know.
And do another workshop.
Well, I don't know about a... I need to... I just didn't realize that, and I thought we could just... And I was going to stand on that hard, and I don't want to say that right now, because I really need to reevaluate based on it's a bigger deal than it was 20 minutes ago for me.
Well, again, and I apologize, but that's my job, is sometimes to be the...
Yeah.
Tell you the bad news, or the news.
The bad news.
The news, it's just an impact, so if you were to... I think from a practical standpoint, if you were to do what's being proposed, then the net impact would be your city manager would get a 4% raise, but then any severance... Remember, now severance is one of those situations, not... It might never happen, but if it were to happen, then it would be greatly impacted, because it would be not only reduced from 26 weeks to 20 weeks, but it also would be reduced from the salary at that time to the salary that it is now without future increases or without... As I understood the proposal, you were saying is that the severance would be on today's salary, not tomorrow's salary.
Correct.
So it would have a real impact on the severance provisions.
Above what I was... Above and beyond what I was calculating.
Correct.
And I'm trying to think of something, and I can't, so... But it's up to the... I mean, I'm just... It's just me.
Is there a reason that they changed the law to 20 weeks? I mean, what has that accomplished?
The legislature, in its infinite wisdom, felt that local governments did not know well enough to provide for their own contracts with their own city managers, and told all cities in the state of Florida that this is how you're going to negotiate your contracts with your own employees. That's a cynical approach, but that's exactly what happened. So they said, any contract with any of your city managers negotiated after July 1, 2011 shall not have a severance for more than 20 weeks.
And let me... I like talking about severance for city managers, as I did last week, because a lot of people don't understand the purpose of it. You know, we are at the... We work at the pleasure of city council, and here, in a lot of places, every two years, there's an election. So we're in that type of position where, when a new council comes in, they can just, first meeting, say, we don't want you as our city manager any longer. The previous city council, you might have been doing exactly what they said and getting along very well, and then all of a sudden, because of an election, you're out of a job. So the concept here is, is that, yeah, if I'm... Do something wrong, you know, malfeasance, misfeasance, there's those type of legal terms, you don't owe me a severance. But if I'm doing the job I've been asked, and then after... And it's usually after the election, council says, move on down the road, it's... The idea is six months of... To give a city manager the opportunity to find a new job.
I agree with that.
And the concept is, is yes, it should be in today's terms or today's dollars, and by freezing it back 10 years ago, or in this case, eight years ago, you're really saying, okay, six months of pay, but eight years or nine, 10, whatever that is.
Right.
So the concept is, is that... And that really hasn't happened with me, is that your pay is supposed to stay up to date, and that's why people get pay raises. And your severance should be... Because, you know, eight years later, that's what you have to live on for six months. So that's the concept behind that.
And I, like I said, like I said last week, I understand that, but I believe that it should be on a sliding scale. So I understand, you could come here, you know, make a full family move, the whole nine yards, and then two years later, them telling you, have a nice life.
Right.
10 years later, though, I don't think it should be... You see, I think a sliding... Because if I get fired from my job, I get my severance, which is kind of the same, but it's not at that... I think you have a very high severance. I'm just, you know... But today, I do. Not when you first got here, because like I said, there's a lot of risk involved in making a move and coming here. That risk has been mitigated with 10 years of employment, is how I look at it.
And also, I'm sorry, Florida right-to-work state, I mean, all of us tomorrow can get fired.
Sure, it should be for a reason, though.
Right, hopefully.
Well, new management comes into a company, they can get rid of you.
Yep.
Not that... I'm not saying you don't deserve a severance. Of course, you deserve a severance, but...
But I would say most management positions that can go away usually has a severance package on the way out the door, too, and it's very common in the private sector also.
Is the 20 weeks on the contract or textual contract, or is it on the dollar amount? So in other words, when I write the contract and I say, okay, you've got 20-week severance, or is it... Can it be at a dollar rate and doesn't include the 20 weeks?
I think what you're saying there is that if it changes, then you have to change it to the 20 weeks. You cannot change that provision.
What is 20 weeks today? So today, 20 weeks, and then?
The apro-rata basis of... I mean, since he's being... Since your cap would be a calculation based upon whatever the annual salary was, so...
But it could be above 20 weeks. Oh, no, I'm sorry, can't... Even what I meant was a dollar amount could not, so... I don't know. I would disagree. I would disagree. I don't think so. I think that would violate the spirit as well as our... So if it's 100... If it's $10, it's, you know, half of that, 20, a fifth of that, yeah, 20%. that, twenty, a fifth of that, yeah, twenty percent.
If it was, it's twenty weeks, so if it was ten dollars a week, it'd be two hundred dollars. And you couldn't get around that by saying two hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, okay.
But my understanding was he could be grandfathered in, though, that...
Well, he is now. It's like our ordinance is...
Is now, that's correct.
If you start doing pre-modaling...
If you open up and renegotiate this, then, then the, the, the way that, the legislative history is very clear, and this is from an attorney general opinion, that, that it would be, um, um, subject to the, uh, the sta-- state statute, uh, two fifteen, four two five.
Bill Cook, excuse me, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we open up Jim's contract, we put ourselves in a potential place of a lot of liability, because when we open up our contract, Jim can do whatever Jim wants to do when he's renegotiating his contract before we come to terms, is that true?
Well, I can't speak to that, I mean, I, I mean...
Potentially, he could.
It's like any other negotiation, you're, you're contemplating asking the person on the other side of the table to renegotiate the terms of the contract. Generally speaking, when that happens, then renegotiation isn't just what you wanna talk about.
Right. And, and this came up, let me give you, this came up in my head, because the original conversation from the paper, remember, with what, what you were talking about, suggested a salary reset, which to me is a renegotiation. But then we got off that, and, and so that's where I originally thought of this and said, "Well, if we're gonna open up the contract to reset the salary, then we wanna a little something here and there."
See, but you're not, you're not opening up the contract...
No, 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 yes.
Because the contract specifically provides...
Oh, I understand that.
This is being done pursuant to the contract.
But in my head, the salary reset means we're gonna renegotiate.
And that's why I said to table it, because we, we, none of us have all the information in front of us, gives us a little more time to figure out, um, what we wanna do with it, and it's just a matter of two more weeks before we're sitting here and we can vote on it.
I'd like to open up to public comment. Thank you. Um, we will now open to public. Um, I, if this gentleman wants to go first, I know you've been very patient, please come up and state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Name of the speaker. Into the record, a letter that...
Date of February 1st. The headline in the local section of today's issue of the Daytona Beach Journal stated, "Raise Likely for City Manager." The article underneath the headline stated that Landon currently earns a base salary of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. The article failed to mention that excluding life insurance premiums that the city pays on his behalf, and city's portion of the insurance, health insurance premiums, plus a seventy-two-hundred-dollar car allowance, his total compensation package is two hundred and eighteen thousand, two ninety-six. It is most interesting to note that Mr. Landon's package of compensation is greater than forty governors of our states, as well as all members of Congress. It is also interesting to note that the last time he was evaluated by the city council, his job satisfaction was seventy percent, that's slightly over a D, barely passing, and he thinks he's entitled to a raise. It is my understanding that the city of Palm Coast is considering a salary increase in excess of six thousand dollars. Mr. Landon does not deserve the two eighteen, one ninety-six that he is now receiving, and yet he has the unmitigated gall to ask for a raise. It is Mr. Landon's responsibility to be in charge, that's what managers are supposed to do, and yet he has grossly shorted his duties in overseeing the renovation of Holland Park. Yes, there were problems and delays of one type or another, but it is, it is his obligation to make sure that the park is completed. He has been appointed to solve the problems, no lame excuses, just get it done. That's what we pay him, two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars to do. It is now two years in progress, and it is not yet complete. It is happening on his watch, and he is derelict in his obligations to the citizens of Palm Coast. I've personally been exposed to Mr. Landon's arrogance and loaded ego, and in closing, I can only state that if Mr. Landon was half as good a manager as he thinks he is, he would be twice as good as he really is. A raise, he's gotta be for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Doug Chesey-Annan. I live in Marina Cove, and, um, just, uh, a couple of questions to the council. Um, you've discussed percentages, but you haven't discussed real numbers. Uh, I'd like to know what, uh, Mr. Landon earns, I'd like to know what his benefit package costs, I'd like to know what the severance package is going to cost, and, uh, I'd like to know how all this compares to other city managers within the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gary Owens, Palm Coast. Uh, to me, this is Palm Coast. I'm sorry, Jim, there's a certain ceiling, you can't, you just can't do it, it's not right. The people, the general public here feel that is, we're, we're getting too excessive. It's not New York, it's not, you know, west, whatever the areas are. There is a point where you just gotta stop, enough's enough, and we're getting too expensive. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Uh, Mr. Landon and I have bucked heads for a while. Do I think he deserves the money that he's making now? Absolutely. The council that sat here ten years ago, they should be all shot for what they did. But anyway, that's, the horse is out of the barn, you can't change anything. Okay. My only question is, the six thousand, sixty-eight hundred dollars, that four percent, is that based upon his current base salary? Or is that going to be based upon his total package? Because above the hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nobody can come up with an accurate figure, because everybody's throwing around the figure of two eighteen. I have reason to believe that it's higher than that, it's closer to two forty. Until we can actually see the resonance, and another issue I have, and no disrespect to the new council people, but back in July, when this conversation all started, Mr. Maguire brought up valid points, but he's gone. Mr. Nobiel voted, yes, the mayor voted, yes, Mr. DiLorenzo voted, no, so now it came down to a tie. Vice Mayor Shipley broke the tie, no increase. My only problem is, you got two new kids on the block. They haven't been here, not counting the mayor. They have two new kids on the block, and they haven't been here long enough, or in, in the office long enough, to actually see, I mean, Councilman Kufus has only been in office a month, okay? How much time, or how much thing, how much everything can he go over in a month? Councilman Shipley, she's been here a while, Mr. Nobiel, he's been here a while. So they've interviewed, they've seen everything they're gonna see, they've, they've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly of the city manager. So until the city can actually publicly come out and say, "Okay, this is his total package, and this is what his severance package is gonna be," because we're talking about twenty weeks of pay. Are we talking about twenty weeks of pay if now, or five years or ten years down the road from now? Because that, five or ten years down the road from now, that twenty weeks pay, 'cause right now, if you walked out the door tomorrow, we're gonna owe him a hundred grand, minimum, out the door tomorrow, a hundred grand. Ten years from now, we may owe him a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out the door, we don't know. So until we can figure out exactly how much his total package is, exactly, right down to the dollar, we can't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ron DeCosta, Palm Coast. The last time, last year, was a different council, they voted three-two against a raise. I said then, and I still believe, it was stupidity. You have a city manager, been here for ten years, look at Palm Coast, what it is today. It's a wonderful city to live in. You look at some of the cities in Volusia County, Flagler County, and look at some of the city managers, and the problems that they're having with their city councils, and look at the cities, and the problems they're having, streets, roads, parks, whatever. And they go through city managers, even in Flagler County. He's been stability right from the beginning. He deserves a raise, he deserves whatever you negotiate to give him, and I'd like to see him get whatever he wants, because he deserves it. Palm Coast deserves it. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's a wonderful, wonderful city, and he is partly responsible for that. And the city manager before him, when it was created in nineteen ninety-nine, that city manager did a fantastic job bringing us up to where we are, or where we were at that point when Mr. Landon took over. We've had two city managers, that's it. You look at, you look back at these other cities, just in our surrounding areas, and see the problems that they're having, and, and mayors, too, and you can thank your lucky stars, you've got this guy in your corner. That's all I can say.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. You know, my hat's off to this man over here. I've been here since nineteen ninety-two, and I've seen the changes, and a lot of us who have been here longer have seen the changes. And it took a guy, a city manager, like Dick Kelton, like he said, and Jim Landon, when times went hard, he kept us up, and he kept us stable, and he kept us liquid. And it wasn't, it wasn't easy to tell people, uh, uh, "I'm sorry, we can't hire anymore," but to keep things lean and mean. This man kept it lean and mean, but guess what? They added this, they added that, they added this, they added that. You newbies that just got here don't know all of the things that, that, uh, and some of the roads and the stuff that went on. I'll tell you that right now, 'cause I live in a place where, where when I first got here, you couldn't get cable where I live, and, and the ro-- and, and, and the roads were rocky, and everything, craters and everything else. Where I, where I live, I live in Pine Grove, and I'll tell you right now, it wasn't so good, and there's other sections that were worse than that, like Seminole, and other, other parts of Palm Coast, but they added shopping centers, they added this, added that, added this, added that, and, and also, people started working. Now, I'm not saying you got the best jobs in the world, some people, but at least you have jobs. And, and also, a, a point that concerns me is law en-- law enforcement. And our level is a whole lot lower than a whole lot of places. I don't wanna say anymore. Y'all, take care.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please.
Jordan Mail, Palm Coast. In the five-plus years that I've been here, I've been a regular attendee on the council meetings and workshops. Uh, I have never really seen anything wrong said about Mr. Landon. He's handled his position very well. Since I've been here, our city has grown by more than ten thousand people. Our infrastructure has grown, we're building a new water plant, our fire department has grown, he's handling more employees, our credit rating has grown. So last year's vote, to me, which was a no, was a political vote. And if Mayor Nets was here, he would tell you the same thing. And Mayor Nets, if anybody values his opinion, who did a great job of running our city as mayor, was emphatically in favor of giving Mr. Landon a raise, and I agree with that. Our city has grown, we are not a sleepy little town anymore, even from when I was here. It used to be a swamp, I'm told, back in the seventies and whatever. We are not that little town anymore, so we can't expect to hire somebody for minimum wage as city managers go. I think if you table this, and you wanna reopen the contract, having been a union man and on a, our board of trustees and handle contracts, now you open yourself up to, maybe we're gonna have to change this, and now maybe we're gonna have to change that. He has done a, a very good job, as far as I'm concerned. He may have different dealings with you, I'm sure, in meetings that I'm not there at, but do we want to, for, as Mr. Nobiel mentioned, a hundred fifty-four million dollars that our budget is, six thousand eight hundred dollars, and the little bit that you're talking in his, uh, severance package, it's, it's a drop in the bucket. And do we wish to alienate him? I hope that wouldn't happen, to maybe give him incentive to look somewhere else. And then if you have to have a search for another city manager, they're gonna wanna start at the same price, and how do you know you're gonna work with him? In maybe two years, you're gonna have to say, "This guy's not working out." I think we have a system that is working very well. I would hate to see it, you know, fall apart, and for that, I think what he is asking is, uh, basically minimal. Had we given him a raise just over the past three years, it would probably cover what he's asking for now. And he hasn't, he hasn't done that. He's been an excellent city employee, he's been, uh, responsive to everybody, and I think he's done a great job. I think the package that he is asking for is, uh, well worth it, and I, I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker.
Good evening, everyone, Dennis McDonald. I read in the newspaper on the first, uh, the daily newspaper, uh, about the workshop that, and what's going on here with Mr. Landon. First off, I'd like to say it's gotten way too personal, from my perspective. Uh, it's not about Mr. Landon, it's about the job and what the job pays for, and that's how the workforce in this country works, at least that's how it was, uh, and, and to my, to the best of my knowledge, right now. He, um, commented that this has become very contentious and political, and real negative out in, in the press and such, and, and I agree with him on that. And what he did is, he asked you to build a consensus with him, okay, about his job and about his salary. Uh, and so what I came to, tonight to ask you for, is to build a consensus with me as a taxpayer and resident, and all the other residents and taxpayers in this town that I'm hearing from. And a lot of people, this, they, they do wanna make it personal, but it's not personal. And so what I'm asking is, are we paying a city manager, our city manager, the right amount of money? Is it time for a reset? Resets go on all the time, across all industries everywhere. And the other thing I'd like to point out is, is that, that it was mentioned here about what people get paid, okay? Well, everybody from the governor on down, uh, the highest elected officials, including the chief justice of the, of Florida Supreme Court, get paid less than Mr. Landon. But I would also like to point out that, um, the city manager in Flagler Beach, um, gets paid approximately ninety thousand dollars. He does an excellent job, okay? I consider him to have more in scope of responsibilities, seeing as how he is directly responsible for the police department. He's also, one of the things that's never talked about, from my viewpoint, is, he is the city, or the county, or the manager I see in the county for tourism. His city hosts everybody, he's gotta put up with it all. We all go there, we all go for a drink, we all go there to eat, we all go there to do all the different kinds of things in Flagler Beach. all the different kinds of things in Flagler Beach. And so we, we all load into Flagler Beach and we all come back to Palm Coast. So, that's another one of his responsibilities. So what I'm saying is, is that consider the fact that they're getting very good value for a city manager for $90,000, and, and I don't know what the, the severance package is for, for the city manager there, but they're getting good value for $90,000, okay? Our top officials in this state don't get paid anywhere near this amount of money, okay? And so I'm saying this, is that, I'm coming here, build a consensus with the voters before you make a move on this. Put it on pause, do a reset, and, and talk to us, and show us how a city manager is worth what you're asking us to pay him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next member from the public. Seeing that, I'll close public comment, I'll take it back to the council. Jim, or, I'm just going to ask you to answer specific questions, and then I'll speak to some points that I believe need to be addressed as well. So, obviously, if you could speak to your current salary, so it's on the record, your benefits, and then exactly what you're talking about as far as your severance.
Okay. Current salary, round figure is base salary is 168.8 approximately. He's showing me 878, okay. So, that's my base salary. Any increase would be on that base salary. My benefits package is similar to the other employees. In other words, there is health insurance, retirement, I do have the car allowance that was, was mentioned, $7,200. All, I'm, I may be missing something, but that's, that's my benefit package. Severance is basically six months of my salary plus my benefit package. You start getting into the fact, you know, you, then you also would pay out vacation and those type of things, and, and exactly what that all would be. I, I don't have the exact figure, we've seen that before. It is, it is substantial, there's no question about it, because it's, uh, six months of my base salary plus my benefits for that time. The, you know, severance packages traditionally for city managers, six months is very common. Actually, a whole year is, is, is not uncommon, but six, six months has always been kind of the, the basic standard for, for city managers.
Well, I think that covered a couple of the comments. You know, as far as, are we paying the right amount of money for services?
Can I answer, because I did some research on that?
That's fine. And then I want to get back to the point, so.
Yes. And it, you know, that, this question's been asked a lot, well, you know, what, are we paying the right amount for, not Jim, but for a city manager? So I, somebody challenged me in an email, and they sent me data. So I don't believe half of what I read, and none of what I, well, I don't believe half of what I see and none of what I read. So I went and did it myself, and I found on a website, according to the national numbers for cities of this size, with revenue of our size, okay? Because it's important, it's not just a city manager. It's how many people, what kind of budget are you dealing with, how many employees are under you, okay? And if for a city manager, he was in the 54 percentile. That means 54% of city managers make less than him. And 46% make more. That's pretty on, I'm thinking. That's, I mean, you know, I mean, okay, what do we, trim 4% to make it even? Now, this is not my numbers. I mean, I know the numbers, I know what he, salary, I know his pension, I, I mean, package and all that. So I entered all this data, and it came up 54%. So I thought, so I answered this gentleman's email, who then never wrote me back, because, you know, so I, I don't think, we have to be careful when we, you know, well, how much is that guy making, and how much is that guy making? You know what? I'm a CEO of a company, so I want to make what Bill Gates makes, because he's a CEO, right? No, it doesn't work that way. It's not, you know, it's not only, it's not only the position, and you don't compare yourself to others. So I'm going to shut up, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
I just, no, I, I just wanted to state a couple things. I think, as of yesterday, is my ninth presentation to organizations and clubs in this community. I have one tomorrow, I have one next week, the following week. And I really talk about city services. And it's more informational about how many road miles we take care of, what do we do as far as planning, building permits. And by the end of my presentation, which is well-attended, I mean, I'm not talking a few people here, a few people there, I, I think the general consensus has been, wow, we had no idea of how complex our city is. We had no idea of all of the cities, or, or all of the services that our city provides for our residents. We have amenities that are, are nice to have amenities, and we have infrastructure that are, need to have infrastructure. And as stated by some of the comments, you know, we went from the fastest-growing city in the nation two years in a row. We went from the number-one unemployment rate in the state of Florida, and we saw some dramatic changes in economic conditions in our community. And one thing that remained steadfast was the quality of life that Palm Coast was able to create for our residents. And, and the general consensus that I have received has been one that has been very positive about how this city runs. I contribute that, not only to the manager, but I really contribute it to our employees. I contribute it to the hard-working people each and every day, that really take pride in everything that they do. But that really does start from an executive that organizes that structure. And we have department heads that I've spent time with and spoken to. And, and I have to tell you, I represented the county for six years, and this city is very well-run. I'm not going to say anything disparaging against the county, but I will tell you, it is like night and day. You should be very proud of, of how fiscally sound this city is. When we have one of the lowest municipal tax rates in the state of Florida for a city our size, that says a lot when we continue to maintain our quality of life. And there's a cost associated with that. So we have a sense of pride in our community. I, I've lived here for 30 years, and I still drive around and feel like I'm on vacation every single day. That's special, and that's unique. I, I can tell you, my observations during my time as mayor have been, one that have been closely monitored. I have been here in the office just about every single day from morning till night, dealing with a multitude of issues of residents' concerns, addressing those issues. Mr. Landon has been very responsive to every single one of those residents that I've asked him to correspond with. I have watched him address the issue of Hurricane Matthew. That was not an easy feat to manage, in particular, debris cleanup, in particular, dealing with FEMA. And, and that was very comprehensive, because as you can tell, there are other communities that are facing challenges that FEMA is not reimbursing them the dollars that they submitted. Those are all very complex issues. That's not an issue you walk in one day and say, I think I'm going to manage a city. It takes an, an extreme amount of background and experience and knowledge to do that. He has also been very consistent with the previous council's priorities that they have set. I have not viewed or, or watched him veer off course from that. He has honored the fact that we have a city council manager form of government. We set policy, he executes that policy, and he runs the day-to-day business of the city. And I can tell you, he, he does that with concrete, concrete sincerity each and every day. And, you know, I've watched him today, you know? We, we have a challenge with relocating a lot of our organizations out of a community center into different locations. Now, that's not an easy feat, feat when you're dealing with over 50 organizations. We had an issue with one of them that wanted to address this council, but wanted to see if there was other options. Mr. Landon was very respectful, our Parks and Rec Department were sitting right there, they found a viable solution, came up with the answers to move forward, and the organization was very happy. That's just a small part of what he does each and every day. City owns its own utility, I can tell you, that's complex. ITT put in a very antiquated stormwater system. That is very complex. It's, it's not an easy thing to hire the correct people to manage that kind of infrastructure. We do have current infrastructure needs. And I mean, I can tell you from past experiences, anyone that knows me knows that I'm very hard on administrators. I don't take my job lightly, and I require that standard to be very high. Jim and I have had many conversations of what my expectations will be in the next year, moving forward, some of the things that I want to address, and he has been very open to that dialogue. So I have confidence that this city is in good hands, and he has my support in an increase in compensation. And we can go back and forth about what the city manager of Flagler Beach is paid, but the city manager of Flagler Beach, quite frankly, manages a population of 4,800 people. We are the largest city in this, in the county with 84,000 residents. Again, that requires an amazing amount of management background experience and tools. So, I, without that, I, I'm looking forward to moving forward as far as an increase in, in the request of salary. And I don't know, Bob, if you wanted to add anything to that?
I, I think most of the comments that I had have already been made by other people, and I'd like to thank the vice mayor, because I tried to do some of my own research, because I've heard the same complaints, and I agree with some of the speakers, that as the city council, it's our job to make sure the taxpayers are getting their money's worth. And it's really easy to look at an individual or an individual pay package and say, boy, that's a lot of money. And it is. But, as the research I've seen points out, it's not out of line for cities that are similar to the city of Palm Coast. And I have been likewise, as I think all the council members have been impressed, with Mr. Landon's performance, and, to their credit, the performance, I think, of just about every other city employee during the emergency with Hurricane Matthew. But particularly with Mr. Landon's. No, I don't think he deserves a raise, because he called me back at 7:00 at night when the power was out on a, on what, to him, was a very minor issue, I'm sure, with all the hundreds of others that he had. But I think it's, it is emblematic of the kind of manager that he is. And likewise, during the campaign, I heard lots of people accusing the city of having some kind of voodoo accounting system that was hiding this and changing that, and how do we know what's being paid for that? And again, as some of the other council members have pointed out, I think we've got, from what I have seen, and I'll be the first one to admit, it's not my strong suit, you know, a financial basis in this city that the taxpayers can be proud of, not just with, not just because of, of Jim Landon, but because of the department heads that he supervises, that keep track of the dollars and cents and the pennies, that it's our job to budget every year and try to make sure it's spent wisely. So I, I also favor the raise that's been requested. I, I hear council member Shipley's comments about the severance, and I agree, I don't want to just be endlessly compounding the salary and the severance that we might have to pay someday. But for tonight, and for the amount of the requested increase, I, you know, I'm prepared to support an increase, and I, whether you like Jim Landon or you hate Jim Landon, and I've had moments, I wouldn't say when I hated him, but he certainly has kind of chapped my, you know what, like a snow cone about this tall. But I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is that we need, we need to evaluate what the position is worth. And from what I have seen, both as a citizen and admittedly only for a few months as a city council member, it's a, it's a job that not many people could do. I'm sure we could get hundreds of applicants if we advertised it for $100,000 a year. And it's possible that in those hundreds of applicants, we might find somebody that would do it, yeah, you know, as, as, sort of as well as Jim Landon does it now. But I don't see any reason to put the taxpayers of Palm Coast through that exercise, when, to me, tonight, it looks to me like we've got someone that's doing the job that we expect him to do for a pay package that is, from what I can determine with independent research, in line with the, with the responsibilities of that job. So, actually, I, you know, I've been a little troubled with the automatic increase that, that's in the resolution. And I'm not a big fan, as I said at the workshop, of automatic pay raises. I realize cost of living, things like that, I mean, and so, but I, I do think that it's our job as the city council to evaluate the manager every year. And I would rather, even though it's a pain in the neck, and I, I don't think any of us like sitting here talking about Jim Landon's salary on an annual basis, or semi-annual, or any other time. I, I would say, for purposes of discussion, if, if we're ready for a motion, that I would favor the 4% increase in the salary. But my motion would limit the automatic increases unless city council approves a different rate to 1% for the next. And somebody help me here, because at the city, at the, at the workshop, we were basically talking about making sure those automatic increases didn't increase beyond the lifespan of any of the, political lifespan of any of the council members on this council. I don't, I don't want to burden my successor with having to change that.
Resolution calls for 2021, which avoids this new thing for a new council. That was the idea, was the next new council, four years from now, would have a year before they had to deal with this, as, as you requested.
Okay. Well, in that case, my motion would be a 4% increase to the base salary for the city manager with a 1% automatic annual increase, unless the city council, following its evaluation at the end of the budget year, agrees that a greater or lesser increase, or no increase, is appropriate.
Evaluation to take place in September.
And so, I think that's key. You know, it's, it's an act of, it's a, it's a historical anomaly that we have to do this evaluation in February, when we're just starting the budget year based on the contract. And I, I think everybody at the workshop was comfortable, and I, I believe, I assume, Mr. Landon is, because it's in the resolution that the staff presented to us, that that evaluation be moved to the end of the budget year, when we can see what performance in terms of having met priorities and met budget and so forth has been.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
For the sake of clarity, let me make sure I understand it, because, you know, we've got, we're going to have to, Virginia and I are going to have to prepare something, and the mayor's going to have to sign, so we want to make sure we get it right. I don't think we want to go through this again too many more times.
1% until 2021, right?
The motion is 4% increase to the base salary.
And the resolution that's before you, that's in the agenda package, that's a public record, provides in section one, that, that the increase would be from 168.878 to 175.600. And it's my understanding, that's 4%.
Well, I, I believe it's a fraction under 4%, but just for clarity's sake, I would say to follow the, the base salary increase that's in the resolution.
Okay, perfect. Now, section two of the resolution, I'm going to modify, as I understand the motion. And what it's going to say is, is that the employee's base salary, consistent, again, with your contract, shall, on September 31st, and then for, through September 31st of, of 2021, shall increase 1% unless otherwise adjusted.
No, no, that's not.
Okay, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking, if I'm not getting.
All you have to do is change the, the resolution to, change a 2 to a 1 is what the motion is, and then no other changes are necessary.
Yeah, I, I don't think it was, it certainly wasn't my intention to make the 1%.
September.
September. The evaluation is September, the increase is on the anniversary date. And I, no, thank you for clarifying that. And no, thank you for clarifying that.
Wait.
Is no September?
Yeah.
Oh, I tried.
Yeah, let's.
That's leap September.
We were trying to sneak one in there. If you don't ever have a September 31st, you don't have to do it.
Okay, let's move forward.
As I understood the motion, is all you have to do is change the 2 to a 1, and it's that simple.
And I'm looking for September 31st, because I do appreciate quantum physics, but I don't think it has much of a place in a resolution.
I wasn't a math major. I'm trying to get you out of this.
No, but I'm looking at the resolution. Where does, I know we've talked about September and the end of September, but I don't see that date in here.
The key to it is, is the current one says that before you get the annual valuation in February, or before the annual raise in February, you have to do the evaluation. It doesn't spell out when you do it. This was a direction of the city council. We can add a paragraph to this that says in the September timeframe, or in September of each year, there shall be an evaluation, if you want to add that to it.
That's fine. I mean, I definitely think we've made that very clear, that we want the evaluation in September.
It doesn't have to be part of the contract. You can evaluate me every week, if you'd like. In my opinion, you kind of do.
I'd like, no, I'd like to add that formal addition to the contract. I think that's very important, and I agree. It's something important that we do collectively, so.
That's easy enough.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just to note, I did the similar research that Stephen did, and there's about 450 city employees, is that true?
Yes.
So in the percentile that your salary is in, you manage the most city employees. So looking at it as if Palm Coast was a corporation, and you're the CEO, and we're the board, and Ms. Mayor's the chair, you have the most responsibility out of anyone in that tier. Just wanted to make it clear, because I tried to whittle down the numbers to find any way that I would be able to.
Well, it's, yeah, it's hard to compare apples, but I was satisfied after the research I did. My conclusions were very similar, if not identical.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll call to question all those in favor of the motion. Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to the consent agenda. Any member from the public wishes to speak on Agenda Item Number 6, 7, 8, 9, or 10, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I will seek an approval for the Consent Agenda, Item 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Move approval of the Consent Agenda, ma'am?
Second.
Moved and approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We will now move to public participation. These are matters that are not on the agenda. Any member of the public can speak on items up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Hi, my name is Doug Chozy-Annon. I live in Marina Cove. I'd like to chat with you about my cable TV bill. I was a Bright House customer, now Spectrum. I pay $166 every month for telephone, pretty good internet at this point in time, and HD cable TV. I do not have any sports packages, any special movie packages, but I do have HD. $166 a month. My bill is going up to $200 a month. 200 bucks a month. When I called up Spectrum, they said I should be happy, because it really should be $236 a month, but I'm getting a discount. So I went down to AT&amp;T on Route 100, and they told me that they're in the process of stringing fiber optic cable in Palm Coast to improve their internet service, which is, in my opinion, their only deficiency. They've wired up Tidelands, which is just north of me, and they gave me a quote based on my living at Tidelands, which is only about 150 feet away, and the bill was $100 a month. I'd have to sign a two-year agreement, but you know something? I have yet to find $2,400 lying in the street. So what I'm asking you folks to do is to accelerate their activity by providing them with the easiest permitting possible. And Mr. Clufus, I voted for you because of your technical background. This would be an ideal way for you to save the citizens of Palm Coast millions of dollars, millions. And I just can't wait for that fiber optic, because I need high-speed internet, to come into Marina Cove. So, Mr. Landon, your job is to manage the installation of AT&amp;T fiber optic cable. Do you accept that?
Well, if.
Silence. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Mary Groso. I have just had a stroke in December, so my speech is a little affected, so I hope you can understand me. I went to address a public safety issue here regarding the feral cat population in Palm Coast and other areas here. I don't know if you're familiar with the zoo in Miami, but the director down there is Ron McGill, and he had a problem in 2000, April, 2016, of a colony of feral cats that were next door to the zoo. And the cats with toxoplasmosis, are you familiar with toxoplasmosis? Okay. They were infecting the monkeys and other animals in the zoo, and they were dying. So he addressed the issue of the monkeys dying, but I'm going to address the issue of what about the children? Okay, because here in Palm Coast, we have feral cat populations. They are in like parks and all over the place here, and they are probably infecting our children, okay? And because, like in his park down there, the cats were infected with toxoplasmosis in a public park. So in this park, you have children coming in, they're cats, they, when they, they, and they're, excuse me, I've had a stroke, these cats, when they go poop, okay, and children can go on and then touch them, put it in their mouths, put it in their ears, any mucus placed on their body, and can contract toxoplasmosis. Now, this is something that also pregnant women, you know, if they contract it, can pass it on to their children, their unborn children, which causes birth defects, deafness, blindness, perhaps autism, cerebral palsy, cliff lips, and mental problems, schizophrenia, perhaps, and I want to address that just a second. I'll do this quick. I will give you each a packet this next week regarding all this information here. But, so here in Palm Coast and our area, we have the same kind of problem. And these feral cats, you know, they get caught, and I think you're trying to renew to them and put them back in the population, but they have tox, some of them have toxoplasmosis. This issue needs to be addressed, and these cats need to be tested for toxoplasmosis, because they're passing it on to children, pregnant women, homeless people, and that's another issue. And I forget the homeless right now. Schizophrenia is also subject now to perhaps causing, toxoplasmosis-causing schizophrenia. In 2014, you had 32 children in Palm Coast Baker Acted from the schools and taken down into Volusia County, where they, you know, got treatment, I guess, but I'm suggesting that perhaps they might have mental issues in regards to this toxoplasmosis, and they're not being tested, because the doctors aren't really aware of this too much, and people with schizophrenia may not be tested. I finished, okay, well, I'll have to address this again.
If you'll leave some information for us as well, we'll talk about that. Thank you. Next member from the public?
Go ahead. Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I want to talk about Belteer South and the medium, and how is the job going, and approximately how long will it take? So far, it looks good, and I just keep smiling every time I go past there and see the palms and the foliage that's being put in. So I just, I'm curious to find out how long, you know, before, hey, it really hits the spot. Thank you.
Next member from the public?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. As you're all well aware, we have a severe homeless situation in the city of Palm Coast. Recently, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office was receiving complaints, which they had to respond to, concerning homeless people in the city of Palm Coast camping. Now, the only one that's probably going to be able to answer this question is the city What constitutes, in the city of Palm Coast, not in the state of Florida or in anyplace else, just the city of Palm Coast, what constitutes camping? Is it a, people pitching a tent, having a picnic, sleeping on a blanket, possibly even fishing? Now, we also know that there are multiple, but we can't get a straight answer as to how many, but there are tent cities in Palm Coast. The biggest known one is behind the library. Now, are they, all these tent cities, and only the sheriff's department can probably answer where they actually all are, are they on private property or on public land? Now, my second comment is, the new community center that was just authorized to spend in, probably, hopefully, only $8 million to build this new community center. When this community center is completed, is there going to be any facilities in the new community center for homeless? And if not, why? And my last comment is, what is the city currently doing? Because to quote Mr. McGuire, unfortunately, unless they're doing something illegal, we really can't do anything to them, which is fine. So I'd like to find out what the city plans to do for the homeless situation that unfortunately is getting worse. And I know a lot of the senior citizens are hoping that there was going to be a new senior center, but maybe there'll be space in the new community center for them. I think that the city should also consider having some space in the new community center for the homeless population. So I'd like to find out what the city attorney's opinion is on what constitutes camping, because that's why these people are being, I wouldn't say harassed, but they're being told that they have to move. So I'd like to find out what the city's feelings are on the homeless situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gary Owens, Palm Coast. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been here, like I mentioned earlier, three years. My folks built in '92, so I've been coming down a lot since that time. I remember just the Tulane Pine Lakes Parkway and, you know, everything. I mean, I love the city. We're here, we're permanent, we're in heaven, and I'm just very proud to be here. Just want to mention also, I'm a registered Republican and part of the 19th precinct. I'm one of the committee person here. I want to talk about the city of Palm Harbors, Palm, or city of Palm Coast, Palm Harbor Golf Course, management, funding, and operation. Please note, I'm a golfer, avid golfer, I love golf. I enjoy Palm Harbor Golf Course. It's an amenity, I think we need to keep it. Don't get me wrong on that. But I think we need to change how it's run. I can't see keep on dumping $300,000, half a million dollars every year of taxpayer money into that course. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but to my limited knowledge, in 2015, there was $300,000 of tax money, taxpayer money, put into Palm Harbor at the end of the year to make up differences, shortage. And here it's a company, or it's a course that's run by Kemper Golf. In that time period, I mean, you had, what, 34,000 rounds of golf played? If you use just 35 bucks a round, average, for the year, but really, it should be more than that, that was almost $1,200,000. Why did the city have to put another $300,000 in to keep that golf course open in 2015? Makes no sense to me. Any other private course would have been very happy to have that many players and would have done a good job without money from the taxpayers. When I play at Palm Harbor, you know, you come in, you got two or three cart guys already right there. You go into the clubhouse, there's a few people in there. You go out and you play around. I have seen six, seven, eight employees under the trees somewhere, hiding, wrestling, or they're playing on their cell phones, or kickback on a tractor, or doing nothing. I'll call the clubhouse. I mean, it makes me mad. I'll call the clubhouse to get those people working. They turn it over to the superintendent, I don't know what happens. But the inefficiency that goes on, I don't know if those are Kemper employees, I never get a straight answer. Are they Kemper or are they city employees? I don't know. But that's not the way to run it. There was that port. You look at a private golf club, the one that I play at mostly, it's 170 acres, they've got six full-time employees and then a few several, a few part-time employees. They were back open after Hurricane Matthew, three days. How many city employees, plus Kemper employees, plus volunteers, jumped into Palm Harbor there to do that? And I'm running out of time. Rates, there's just so many different things. You're pushing Kemper to offer cheap rates. You got 15 days remaining, 40 bucks, and you can play two people. Pass holders, $19, guests, 25. Here's a city in the Palm Coast Observer.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you. Next public speaker.
Too much money.
Good evening, I'm Tim McDonald from Palm Coast. Sorry about the appearance, I'm doing skin cancer treatments, I look horrible. I'd like to lodge a complaint regarding the process used at the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board meeting held in January 18th of this year, and I'm just talking about the process, not the project. The public hearings portion of the agenda clearly states rebuttal by applicant, city staff, or public, if applicable. During the meeting, the applicant and city staff were given the opportunity to give rebuttals, but the public was denied that right. Several residents attempted to offer rebuttals, some by raising their hands, others by just speaking out, when it was obvious we would not be given the opportunity to share rebute, all such attempts. Personally, there were some comments I would have made during the public comments section of the meeting if I had known that the public would be denied the right during the rebuttal section. As I understand it, this public rebuttal section is not usually included in city agendas, but it has been included in the planning board's agenda since at least 2015, and should be honored by the board. To not do so could expose the city to litigation or give the appearance of inappropriate favoritism on behalf of the city. Given the very nature of the last planning board meeting, favoritism is a real concern for residents. The first time a development went before the planning board, it looked as though some of the members might oppose the project, so the developer asked for continuance. During that meeting, Mr. Papa was the lone speaker for the city's planning department. When the developer returned to the planning board a few weeks later, Mr. Tyner provided a seven-minute endorsement of the project and the developer before turning over to Mr. Papa for the objective city presentation. During the meeting, there was a discussion about possible changes to the development. When a member of the board suggested the developer make the changes and bring it back to the board, a city attorney jumped in to save the day. And I quote, "Usually when you're in this position, and you don't have the exact language that you want, or that you can't get it at this point in time because you don't have all the information, typically you would move to continue. But this board has heard this matter twice, and perhaps it's more appropriate at this point in time for the board to simply state the condition that the board would like to see added," end quote. It seems very odd for a city attorney to recommend the board operate in an atypical manner just to save the board from reviewing a proposal a third time. I request that the city council sets aside the planning board's January 18th votes on Agenda Items 2 and 3, and return the items back to the planning board for further consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next member, would you make public comment?
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Four items. Yesterday's county commissioners' meeting, speaking about the homeless, a homeless man who was a veteran, constantly comes to the commissioners' meeting, speaking about need for homeless help. Stayed at the podium for his three minutes, pleading for help for the homeless, and peacefully said he wouldn't leave until they could help him out. When he didn't leave, he was arrested by the sheriff's deputy and escorted out. So the homeless is a problem. I noticed, I think it was on a meeting prior, maybe in a workshop, talking about our long-term goals. goals, I would hope the city would consider funding a standalone senior center. I know we're building our new center over here, but as Mayor Holland mentioned, you have 50 groups, maybe more, competing for space. I think with the enlargement of our population, I think we would do well to look at a standalone senior center in the future. I had also previously asked about the do not enter signs for the exit, for the tractor supply on Belt Air. Well, the do not enter and exit only signs were erected, and thank you for having that done. And I haven't seen any issues with traffic and almost accidents there because of that. So thank you. Also, last year, speaking of money, not that I want to just throw money around of everybody's, but the city council voted against a raise for yourselves. Having just seen an article in the Daytona News-Journal about the payment of county commissioners and other city and town commissioners and council peoples in the area, in Flagler County and other areas, my estimation, you people are underpaid. And I think you should, I know it's hard maybe for you to think of that, but should revisit that. Not that I'm throwing out a figure or anything, but for the work that you do, and I know the time you have to put in, the aggravation of emails, phone calls, and everything else, travel, et cetera, I think you might want to revisit that issue this year and look upon a raise for yourselves. I think that is deserving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. See, now, I'll take it back to council. First issue, ATT, FiberNet. Jim, are you, do we have any knowledge of future plans for AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is installing FiberNet throughout the community, a lot of our neighborhoods. And, you know, they don't, I mean, they get permits to trench in our right-ofways, but it's a simple application. We are not holding anything up that I've heard of whatsoever. And it's a, it's a private utility. City doesn't have any actual involvement other than allowing them to use our right-ofway, and they have that right.
I tell you, for years, all we had was Bright House, which was fascinating to me because we had to pay for what we got.
I know. I was here, we had antenna. So, I'm pretty happy right now.
But, you know, but to that point, it is nice to have healthy competition for communities.
Sure. So, like the gentleman said, the only way to actually speed up the expansion of infrastructure via private or public would be competition. But last week, I put a phone call out to Columbia Telecom Communication Corp., who did the feasibility study for Ocala for their fiber optic infrastructure that's run through their municipality. I received a phone call back today after he had done a week of research, and preemptively, a week from now, he'll give me something that I can show our council that is, outlines what a potential feasibility study would entail, and price points, and things that we could potentially bring his team in here to discuss. But if we want to talk about improving build-out speeds, and we have to talk about competition, but having a feasibility study for our fiber optic infrastructure, known as FiberNet, is something that I think this Columbia Telecom Communication Corp. can help with, specifically because they helped with Ocala.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that more at our workshops, but I, I think we definitely discussed the feasibility and having a need for that.
I will check in to make sure that we're not holding up AT, AT&amp;T's process. Everybody that gets the fiber to their home, that's what they're doing now, I'm hearing good things about it, so it would be--
It's life-changing.
Yep. So I'll make sure we're not holding anything up.
And can you speak to the feral cat population, or perhaps we can put Barbara Grossman in touch?
Yes, if she, if she has any specific locations. Couple of things, I mean, this is an issue we've been addressing for years. They are not, we don't allow feral cat colonies on city property, and in our parks, that would just, because some people like cats, some people don't, and it's a public property. And then we do work with Humane Society in an effort to reduce the population through their program, which everybody knows is called, most people know it's called TNR.
Air release.
Yes, and we are, we'll continue to do that. So I think, yes, if she has specific locations, specific concerns, we can address those, and I'll, we'll have somebody get a hold of her.
If you could just leave your contact information in the, in the back or to somebody, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Carl, if you will get with her--
Okay.
--and make sure we can make contact with her.
So Belt Air South meeting, how long will it take to be complete?
I got a little report on it today. I mean, they're making good progress. This is one that the city crews are working on. Next week, the following week, they should be going to the next stretch, which is from East Hampton Central Avenue all the way down to State Road 100, and start grading that area. As far as finish up, I will say late spring, early summer is the kind of timeframe we're talking about. With city crews, there are things like hurricanes and things that can cause them to go elsewhere, but right now, they're really getting after it, and see no reason why it can't be finished up in a few months, couple of months.
Mr. Reichman, did you want to comment on what constitutes actual camping?
Well, first of all, I think it's important to understand that there's a big distinction between private property and public property, and you have, and if people are out on private property, then there's all sorts of criminal statutes that can be enforced, apart from whatever the city of Palm Coast may be able to enforce. You know, there's trespass, there's, there's, there's many, many state statutes that could be brought, and these are, these are criminal state statutes that can be brought, brought to bear. As far as public property, we have various provisions in our code, mostly found within Chapter 42, that, that provide for limitations on what people can do on our public property. They deal with pollution, they deal with litter, deal with hours of operation. You can't sleep, lodge, or camp in a, in a park overnight. So we have, you know, I can't speak to the exact examples that the gentleman was speaking of, but we have codes that when we become aware of violations of our code, we can move to enforce them.
Yes, I, again, I can speak a little bit. I met with the director of the Health Department the other day. One of the initiatives that Flagler Cares is taking on is addressing the homeless population. They're working with different institutions as well as community churches. So when we get those updates, we will certainly provide those as we have them come in. They're going to be working on a strategy moving forward on how to address the issue. It will be a county-wide strategy, and I know they're engaged with the county directly in order to find solutions to that issue.
Mayor, if I may, yes, and we've worked with county and some of the resources they have there. Some of these people who are camping out on their benches and that we ask to move along, we offer them opportunities for where they can go and the resources available to them. They choose not to take that up, so having a place for them to go doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to go there. And so, yeah, but we are in contact with the county, as you indicated, to try to assist whenever we can.
Absolutely. And I, and I know that the Sheltering Tree and other entities work closely with those. So I do know it's going to be addressed, but I do believe it's going to be addressed from the county standpoint through the Health Department. The planning board, if you want to address the practice and the policy, I'm not sure if it was something followed that was contrary to that, or--
Well, I can, I can, I don't know what their written document indicates, and maybe we need to update that and take a look at it. Their process is very similar to yours in that they have citizen comment period, and then once that's closed, then city council has discussion, they, I think they ask, okay, can staff and developer, will you address some of these issues? It's really up to the chair to, and the planning board, just like it is for you all, to determine whether you'd open that back up for more citizen comment. It's really usually unusual to then open it back up for citizen comments. That's what's going on there. You know, the other issue as far as changing the resolution or the ordinance on the spot, you can do that either way. I mean, my pay raise tonight, you know, you instruct the attorney to do certain things, he will do that as per the record, and you move on. You can choose to table it and say, I want to think about this more and see some changes. Either way, you can, is, is okay and appropriate. It's really up to the planning board at that time to decide whether they're ready to take action or not.
Well, I mean, I think I, just to have legal clarification, we did not, or they did not, not follow a common practice, did not veer off course from it. I just, I think it's important for the public record--
I'd be more than happy to report back. My understanding is that, and I'm not sure exactly which, which proposal, I was, I mean, I have to say, I was not there that evening, it was someone else from my office. I'm not sure exactly which item that the gentleman is speaking about, he didn't identify it specifically. If he had, it would have been arguably inappropriate because most likely it's quasi-judicial. He indicated he wasn't, he wasn't going to get into the merits of it. My, my, I would imagine, my speculation is, is that the, that the quasi-judicial hearing that he was discussing, that the item he was discussing this evening was quasi-judicial, and most likely it was a recommendation from the PLDRB to the city council, nothing more than a recommendation, was not final action. I'd be more than happy to, to review the, the bylaws and the agenda, but again, as the city manager indicated, those are, those are matters that are within the discretion of the PLDRB. Certainly, there, there has to be, everyone in a quasi-judicial situation has to be given an opportunity to have some input, but there's nothing in Florida law, or necessarily in Robert's Rules of Order, that requires or mandates that everyone be given as many bites as the apple as they wish, and that certainly is nothing, there's no case law, and there's nothing in the Florida statutes that requires that. I think I would conclude by saying it really depends upon the, on how the PLDRB wants to control its own, its own meetings. But I will take a look at the minutes and find out exactly what the, the standards are for the process, and, and, but just, but the only thing I'd ask the audience to remember, and that is, at the, at the end of the day, due process must be followed, and that means that, that every party has an opportunity to speak, and I did not hear that that was not the case.
Thank you. And last, public speaker spoke, thinking of the do not enter, so we'll relay that, but also, you know, there's not been discussion as far as salary increases and--
We'll relay.
We'll have--
We're not talking about that.
But, but, I mean, that's something that obviously would have to be brought up by a council member, and I've not heard that since I've been on this council. And we'll now take it to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda.
I don't have anything for this evening.
Okay. Discussion by city attorney, you know what, I do want to bring one item up, just, so, this came up this morning in a meeting I was at, Representative Renner has filed a bill that demolishes Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida. He has taken a very strong stance. Representative Corcoran, the Speaker of the House, has told him to do so, and he is following leadership in regards to that. We've had several members, including our economic development arm in the county, Helga Eckert, as well as our tourism arm, Matt Dunn, as well as several business people, hoteliers, that feel very strongly that this is detrimental to marketing dollars and incentive dollars. Basically, what they're saying is they don't see the return on investment as far as incentive dollars for economic development in communities, and Governor Scott completely disagrees. I've spoken to several individuals today as far as the Senate. The Senate, I don't see any traction at all happening on this issue, but I just want to make it very clear that several business people in our community have sent letters. If you want, I can forward those to, to inform the rest of the council of what the issue looks like. But it will be a change of how we do things as far as tourism and economic development in the state of Florida, if it were to pass. It's interesting, I'll also send an article of showing how Governor Scott spoke pretty negatively of our Speaker of the House, so. But, but again, it's something that is going on in our community. This is our legislative delegate, this is our representative. We do rely heavily on tourism, as well as look at partnerships for incentive dollars when they come our way. So it, the bill clearly states that these will not only go away, but also the dollars will go away. So, that's all I have. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
Questions by city manager.
I would add to that another bill, this one by our Senator, Senator Hudson, that looks innocent, but not so much from our standpoint, and that is that your cell carriers or tower providers are proposing that they can use our public street right-ofways without any oversight by cities. They can just use a right-ofway because they're a utility. They will, I've heard them advocate, they've actually applied here in Palm Coast, I've heard them advocate that, well, we'll just put a antenna on one of the poles, you know, electrical poles. And, and you know, I don't think anybody would care about that. It's a, it's FP&L's pole, and if you just put a, they call them microsails. But the application they submitted to us was a 150-foot cell tower, right on Cypress Point Parkway, and I don't know, they could, you know, if this passes, they could put it right on Belt Air, Palm Coast Parkway, 150 feet up in the air, right along our street. That is, it's dangerous, in my opinion, and we encourage, we have city sites, we allow them in our, in our parks and all our city property that's not environmentally sensitive, we encourage them to be there. So we're, we're working with our contacts in Tallahassee on that issue too, to make sure that they don't preempt the city's ability to control some of the things, or the things that go on in our right-ofway. The, a couple of other things on the activities around here, this weekend, starting Friday, and I never get this right, I've been told, so it's, it's not a feast, it's a fest. That's number one, but the Birds of a Feather Fest is--
I'm not going.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's our annual bird show that has become very, very popular. We have some art classes or art displays going on this year, et cetera, so it, once again, starts on Friday and goes through Sunday this weekend with the central location here at City Hall. The other thing is Saturday, March 11th, is a Palm Coast Seafood Festival. We've talked about that, I'm trying to get that word out to as many people. This is, we've got a, someone that is from the St. Augustine area that's coming down and putting this on, using Central Park, and that's Saturday and Sunday, March 11th and 12th.
When we have to dress like a pirate for?
Yeah, the pirates will be there.
Yeah.
I always can dress up like a lobster.
And then the last thing I have is just, I want to say thank you for the kind comments and for the consideration on salary. That's all I have, Mayor.
There.
motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.